Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 26th session of the Bellingham City Council. We have one announcement. On February 23rd, 2015, at 7:00 PM, there will be a public hearing to take comment regarding an incentive program for innovative, affordable, low-income homeownership projects. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, unjudged, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Just under the bell.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Gene Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Eloquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Lots of track.
Thank you, Linda. Now we'll go to our 15-minute public comment period. We can comment on anything except the public hearing tonight, which is a public hearing on renewal of emergency ordinance established interim zoning on cultivation of medical marijuana or personal use in collective gardenings. I'll read your name, and you have three minutes. Linda will have the trusty timer. Gathia Weiss.
Hello, I'm Gathia Weiss. I live here in Bellingham, and I wanted to speak on today's work session. Under the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, no state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any citizen of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of those laws. This applies whether or not you're a homeowner, a car owner, a bicycle owner, or own no property at all. It applies whether or not your very presence as someone unlike themselves makes those other people feel uncomfortable. This afternoon, in a work session of the council's Public Works and Public Safety Committee, two proposed ordinances were under consideration. One was an ordinance regarding failure to respond to a civil infraction. The other had to do with what were called pedestrian safety areas. In my opinion, failing to see that treating, for example, bicycle infractions as a criminal act, a misdemeanor, while analogous infractions in an automobile would be ticketed as civil matters, is a serious abrogation of those constitutional rights. Failure to see that it's easier to notify a homeowner of an infraction than someone with no address at all is similarly concerning. If we are going to be happy that a family spreads its blanket on the grass at the city park, or to sit or lie there and enjoy the ambiance, then we have to be willing to let all people do that during whatever hours it is that we allow any people to do so. If public drunkenness is a problem, that applies to all of us that step out of a local restaurant and tavern as much as anyone hanging out on a street corner. If someone is blocking passage down a sidewalk, that is the issue, not how they're doing it or who they are. This was a work session, and so considerable effort can still be done to see that this measure, when enacted, protects our city residents and visitors alike, basic civil rights. But I believe that the city administration needs to go back and evaluate not only the ordinances themselves, but also the process that led to these ordinances coming forward. How is it that these provisions, which were stated not to be intended to have the effect of being directed at certain classes of people, in fact, play out that way? This may, in fact, have been an unintentional consequence, but that is an institutional failing, not an excuse. Red flags regarding breaches of basic human civil liberties should have been raised sooner. These ordinances should not, in my opinion, have made it even as far as a work session in their current form. We can do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gathia. Richard Conneboy.
Call me Dick.
I know. I'm just kidding. Yeah, you just lit up the whole room there, Dick.
My name is Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street here in Bellingham. I'd like to speak to the same issue. First of all, I'd like to thank Terry Bornhaman for his comments this afternoon at the work session on these ordinances, because I think he was spot-on with respect to the youth and how these might involve the youth in a turbulence that they cannot get out of. And similarly, others whom we find downtown who might be subject to these ordinances about bicycles or skateboards or sitting and lying and whatnot. When the city attorney mentioned that if they got a citation, they would be able to respond and check off a box and whatnot, that assumes that they have the mental capacity to do so. If they're on drugs, you know, meth, or they're on alcohol, or they're just mentally ill, do they really have the capacity to know what responding to that citation will be? And finally, I'd like to say, if this were really about pedestrian safety, talk about sitting and lying particularly, we would immediately see the removal of all those sandwich signboards that proliferate in the downtown area in Fairhaven. And talk about obstructing pedestrians. Did you ever try to go by the little cheerful café in the summer when the tables are out? And I think, Jack, you mentioned something about that this afternoon. And what about those tables on the sidewalk of the Fairhaven Rocket Donuts in the summer? You know, he's got a nice terrace there with tables, but he also puts them out on the sidewalk and blocks the way considerably. And we also mentioned the ones blocking the sidewalk in front of Tony's Café in Fairhaven in good weather. And if we're talking about safety, what about the uneven walking surfaces created by the tree wells that proliferate along the sidewalks here in Bellingham? And why is a chair put out by a business owner less a hazard than one put out by a homeless person? And why is a bench in the middle of the sidewalk, you can check them out in front of Hiama's or Woods Coffee on Railroad Avenue, any less of a hazard? Is it because these are considered artwork? And why is sitting on the sidewalk at a bus stop less a hazard than sitting anywhere else? And how does one determine if someone is really waiting for a bus? And one might also talk about the goat cart down at the market. You know, it's got a lot of sharp edges, and, you know, we've got to be careful of that. I think these two ordinances need a lot more work and discussion. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Thank you, Dick. Yoshi Ravel.
Hi, my name is Yoshi Ravel. Thank you to members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, Madam Mayor. There's a phrase that we use called reduce, reuse, and recycle. There's a reason that the word reduce is first. If we're going to slow climate change, we have to reduce. We have to start consuming less and sharing more. And in fact, recycling is a form of enabling. It enables us to say, oh, well, I'm doing my part by recycling, but in fact, it's enabling our overconsumption, which is heading us straight for ecological disaster in the form of climate We witnessed the failure of communism and socialism in the Soviet Union because state ownership does not work. We are now beginning to recognize that capitalism does not work either, because there's no such thing as private ownership or state ownership. We are stewards of the gift we have been given. We own nothing. We own nothing privately. We own nothing publicly. We are stewards. And as stewards, we need to start listening to the signs that are all around us. Climate change is really happening, and it's going to get much worse unless we start consuming less and sharing more. It's the only sustainable way that we can live on this planet, is by consuming less and sharing more, and realizing that we are all in this together. There is one human family, and all the nations are part of that one family. There is no them. There is only us. And we need to start listening to the signs and consuming less and sharing more, because if we don't, the laws of nature do not change because we think capitalism works, or because we think we have private property, or we have public property. The laws of nature will balance things out, and it will be catastrophic if we don't make the decision now to start mitigating our overconsumption. I thank you all for your attention, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Larry Hildes.
Thank you, members of the council, Madam Mayor. I'm also here to speak about the proposed expansion, the Sidley Ordinance, and the, what I'm going to call, for lack of a better phrase, the criminalizing of conduct that people can't help, ordinance making it a misdemeanor. Normally, I just speak to you as a private citizen, business owner in this town. As you may know, I'm also a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer with a client or a case at this point, but I'm speaking to you as one. The Ninth Circuit has made it clear repeatedly, case after case, you cannot criminalize homeless people for being homeless. You can't criminalize them for sitting on the sidewalk or lying down, because they don't have living rooms or bedrooms. You can't criminalize them for having property, because they have no place else to put it. You cannot criminalize them for conduct that they have no place else to have but in public. That's what being homeless is. This is a draconian solution without a problem. We've lived in Bellingham for 12 and a half years. We spend, I would say reasonably, most of our money in downtown Bellingham or in Fairhaven. We believe in buying local. The number of times that I have tripped over or endangered myself avoiding a homeless person is the same number as the number of shelter beds that the city provides. Zero. None. So you're going to criminalize people. You're going to hit them with more infractions for doing what everybody has to do, sitting down, sleeping, functions you cannot live without. And then when they get to three of them, you're going to find them guilty of a misdemeanor. And then you want to tell them to go get job training? You've just created a criminal record for them. How much do you think that's going to help them in getting a job? And this idea that we're going to patronizingly take care of homeless people by maybe instead of sending them to jail for three months, forcing them into drug and alcohol counseling, sure, that may be a good idea for them to get it. Mental health counseling, sure. Job and vocational training? Then they can have a menial job while still living on the street. Study after study has said that the way you deal with the problems caused by homeless people and of homeless people, you give them a place to live. All the other problems go away. It's worked in place after place. This solution has been tried over and over and over and over, and it has not worked, because you do not get rid of people by making them criminals. They don't have any place else to go. The definition of a homeless person is someone who's too poor to live in housing. Most people don't want to be homeless. They're too poor to live in housing. Guess what? They're too poor to leave. This is inhumane. This is offensive. And case after case, it's illegal, and it's not going to solve a problem that really doesn't exist. A society is judged on how it treats the poorest and the weakest, not the Downtown Business Association. We ask you to scrap these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Karen Wheel.
Thank you, members of the council and Madam Mayor, for hearing us. Basically, Larry took all the words out of my mouth. I do want to say, study after study has shown that the way you treat homelessness is by giving people a place to stay. I realize treating homelessness by giving them homes seems like really obvious, but when they look at how to reduce mental health issues, how to reduce drug abuse issues, how to increase people having jobs, the first thing you need to do is give them a place where they can, you know, an address that they can put on their resume, giving them a place where they don't feel like they have to worry every single night. Am I going to have to get back to the shelter quickly enough to make sure that I get a place to stay? By giving them that stabilization, that psychological strength, that is the platform from which all the other things spring. So yes, the way to solve homelessness is to give people homes, and to give them an address, and to give them some stabilization in their lives, so that they can then turn around and deal with all the other issues that you're trying to reduce. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Dean Tuckerman.
First of all, I am going to speak on the homeless issue, and on the Sidley Ordinance, which is greater than the homeless issue, actually. But I'm going, first of all, I'm going to say that there is a technical problem that this weekend, people could not read the ordinance itself. The server was down or something like that. Now, I realize that this is, I thought that this would be the hearing on it. It's not, and that's good, because people need time to read it to be able to decide what they want to do, and it needs to be promoted well, that this is happening. And when the hearing comes up, it needs to be promoted well, because, and second of all, I'd like to actually thank you. Thank Kelly, and thank everyone that wrote this. The ordinance, even though it is terrible, it's not as terrible as it could be. It is, it does have exceptions for disabled people. That is a good thing. But the ordinance itself is awful. And the other thing is, wherever it's been tried, in Berkeley and other places, it hasn't worked. It doesn't stop people from sitting on the sidewalk, which is their right anyway. There are laws against blocking doors that can be enforced. There are other, but anything else should be people's right to do. I mean, to create these exceptions, there's an exception for people watching a parade. Why should there be an exception for people watching a parade and not an exception for people just wanting to sit somewhere? Unless the city can create a place 24 hours a day where people can go and where people find it, even then, I mean, that would help a lot if they did that. But even if they do, this law is ridiculous. And I agree with what Larry said, that this really isn't a problem. People are not tripping over people. I walk around with a walker a lot, and sometimes I ask people to excuse me. They do. It is not that much of a problem. I don't know why you need a law, and why you need a law that then goes into a misdemeanor of all things. That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. That was the last name on the list. Is there anybody else wishing to speak before the council? Seeing none, we will now close the 15-minute public comment period and go to the public hearing. We had one public hearing tonight, a public hearing on the renewal of emergency ordinance establishing interim zoning for the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and It's all yours, Kurt.
Okay.
Peter, excuse me.
No, that's fine. Peter Raffato, city attorney. As you state, this is a public hearing on the renewal of an emergency ordinance establishing interim zoning for the cultivation of medical marijuana. And I'll just repeat from the summary statement, which I think is succinct. On December 15th, 2014, the city council renewed an emergency ordinance and interim zoning regarding land use regulations related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. The state statute on this authorizes the city council to adopt interim zoning without holding a public hearing, provided a public hearing is held within at least 60 days of its adoption. The purpose of this hearing is to take public testimony regarding the renewal of the interim zoning, after which the city council may rescind, modify, or affirm the adopted ordinance. The six-month interim ordinance will allow the city to preserve the status quo while conflicting recreational and medical marijuana rules are contemplated and hopefully resolved by state legislators. And the staff recommendation on this is to vote to approve, and I would just say that I think affirm is probably the better term. And one clarification, it talks about you may rescind, modify, or affirm. This ordinance is currently in existence, so it's not like you'd be adopting something that isn't already in existence. And with that, I don't know if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Peter before we open up the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing, and I'm going to apologize upfront. I'm going to give it my best shot. The first person on the list, and the only person on the list, is Zacharelli Fresco Baldi Grimaldi. Is that even close?
Yeah.
Not bad, huh? Is he here? He's not here. Okay.
He stepped back in.
Oh, he stepped back in? Zacharelli? You want to testify? You're up.
You're on.
You're all right? Okay. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it back to council. Mr. Weiss.
I'll move to affirm. Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Kurt. Wonderful job. Okay, we will now go to our council standing committees. The first committee on the docket is Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornhaman's the chair.
Thank you, Gene. We had three items before the committee today. The first was a bid award for the McLeod Road culvert replacement, bid number 66B-2014. The project provides for construction at Baker Creek of a fish-passable culvert. Work includes construction of an aluminum bottomless box culvert, footing, head walls, wing walls, backfill, paving, asphalt, curb, gutter, sidewalks, utility protection, erosion control, traffic control, detour, stream restoration, and other work. The lowest responsive and responsible bid is $293,263 by Stemlor Gravel Incorporated. Today, the committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Jack.
Ted, how many other, I guess, obstruction areas are there on Baker Creek that we will ultimately need to deal with outside of this one?
Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I can certainly look into that. We have several areas, I think, that would need to be retrofitted with fish-passable culverts, but I don't have the total number, so I could come back to council with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The second item we had before us was the community paramedic pilot program update. Today, Fire Chief Bill Newbold and Captain Rob Stevenson, the community paramedic, presented an update on the paramedic program. The fire department is conducting a nine-month pilot program to provide community paramedic service. The pilot program began October 1st, 2014, and will extend to June 30th, 2015. More than 40 years after the emergency medical services system was developed in Watcomb County to manage trauma and cataract arrest, the use of EMS via 911 is now dominated by calls to non-emergent situations. Bellingham Fire Department's community paramedic program aims to establish a sustainable model for improving the use of existing EMS resources through scope of practice, flexibility, and coordination with other community resources, public safety, and partnering health providers. The presentation provided an update to the council on the experience to date from a community paramedic. Today's presentation, it was a good presentation. Rob had presented some specific stories of how this program is working in terms of meeting with individuals who have had extensive backgrounds with calling EMS services, and after meeting with him and working with, and referrals, have been able to reduce those calls. And so, at this point, the program does seem to be working. He is working with other providers, and we're seeing reductions in those calls to EMS from targeted groups. I just look forward to seeing the future reports on this, because it looks like it's a program that, you know, is working and hopefully will continue to do good work. I don't know if there's anything else from anyone? This was for information only today. If nothing else, then our last item was a work session to consider two ordinances, an ordinance regarding the failure to respond to a notice of civil infraction, and an ordinance regarding pedestrian safety areas. In 2013, 2014, Bellingham Mayor Kelly Linville convened a community solutions work group to prioritize public health and safety solutions for various challenges facing downtown Bellingham. The work group identified adjusting municipal codes to allow for more effective intervention and enforcement in downtown and other areas. The ordinances for consideration included a failure-to-respond ordinance with authorizes police to issue a misdemeanor citation when individuals ignore civil infractions for behavior such as drinking in public, and a pedestrian safety area ordinance, which spans hours of prohibition for sitting and lying in public rights of way in the downtown pedestrian safety area and the Fairhaven pedestrian safety area, in addition to other adjustments to the code related to pedestrian safety. Staff recommended a discussion of these ordinances followed by a public hearing prior to adoption. So today, we started the conversation, and it was a good conversation. I think one of the things we saw early on is with most areas of law, when you start looking at changing laws and others, there's many sides to it that needs to be considered. Sometimes we look at things, and we look at one part of it, and things seem very black and white and obvious. As we've seen quickly today from the conversation, things aren't always black and white there. Many shades of gray as we go through it, and we have to sometimes look at unintended consequences. We've started the conversation. We will set it out for, have another work session on it, probably before, and see where it goes from there. But it will, before it would pass, it would go for, I believe, would need to go for a public hearing, as we've seen, we're already having public input from it, so I think that would really be needed. Today's work session was for information only. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add? If not, end of committee.
Thank you, sir. We now go to the planning committee. Jack Weiss is the chair of that one.
Thank you, Gene. This afternoon, we had one item. It was an overview of the 2016 comprehensive plan update process, including draft growth alternatives for accommodating projected growth using the 2036 growth forecast adopted by the city and the county. The Growth Management Act requires the county and cities to adopt a comprehensive plan and update their plans periodically. The city's next comprehensive plan will cover the period from 2016 to 2036 and must be adopted by June 30th, 2016. During the January 26th City Council Planning Committee meeting, staff provided an overview of the comprehensive plan update process to date, including potential an overview of the comprehensive plan update process to date, including potential growth options for accommodating the twenty-year population and employment forecasts, which were adopted via resolution by the city council in April of two thousand fourteen. This afternoon, we, we received a report by, by Rick Sepler, our planning director, and, and two other staff members, Greg Alcott and Lisa Poole, concerning the, the comprehensive plan and where we are to date, and it was for information only. I don't know, Rick, if you have anything else that you want to offer? We're, this is just an update. We will be having additional conversations shortly, and we will most likely have a planning committee meeting as a, as a work session relatively soon. So with that, end of committee.
Thank you, Jack. Boy, the department heads are just yakety tonight, aren't they? Thank you, Rick. We now go to, oh, you have a question? Excuse me?
No, it's okay. May I have a comment?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to add one thing that I, that Rick Sepler said today that I thought was very impactful on our process, and he said, "We have the opportunity to create a true legacy through this comprehensive plan." And that was very impactful for me, because it made me look at it in a much different way of how we come together and we do this planning, so thank you for that context.
Okay, thank you, Pinky. Now, we go to finance and personnel. Pinky Vargas is the chair of that one.
We had one item in front of us today. It was an ordinance amending the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen adopted budget to fund Phase One, the startup of the implementation of the rental registration and inspection program. Council approved on first and second reading an ordinance establishing the rental registration inspection program on December fifteenth. Staff is developing an implementation process for this program that will allow all non-exempt rental housing to be registered by August first, two thousand fifteen. In order to finalize the development of the program, allow adequate time for public outreach, and ensure a successful implementation process, Phase One startup funding is required. This funding will provide the needed technology and personnel, and ultimately, all the startup costs will be covered through program fees. Council direction is to ensure that the rental registration inspection program is self-funded. We don't have all the specific numbers for us. That will be presented in two weeks, I believe you said, Rick? But at this point, Rick Sepler gave us a presentation this afternoon, and the funding that they are asking for to include staff and software, et cetera, for two thousand fifteen is a hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. And for two thousand sixteen, fifty-eight thousand, ninety-one, nine, one hundred dollars. And, Rick, is there anything in particular that you wanted to add in regards to the ordinance?
Solely that after the fees are received, we'll reimburse the Development Services Fund, so it'll supplant the funding we're advancing. You, council could choose to advance now.
Okay, thank you. Our committee unanimously voted to approve. Any comments, questions?
So move.
So move?
Second. Michael seconded. Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Jack?
Just a repeat of a comment I had from earlier today.
Yes, I'm glad you were going to do that, because I was going to do it, but no, you do it.
You know, we have, we have received comments over the last few years about how expensive this, this particular program will be, how unworkable, just all of the different obstacles that the city would be facing in the community, the property owners themselves and the tenants. And what's come out of this, through the initial stage of implementation, is that this program is going to be very, very inexpensive. It will be very effective in terms of what it's actually addressing, and a lot of the, I think, the comments that we received from many people are just simply not going to come to pass. The program is, is, as Rick had described today, you know, the registration component of it, less than, less than a dollar per unit per month on, on rental units, they're going from anywhere from six hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. The cost of an inspection be eighty to ninety dollars. That would be done every three years, and you look at that and see what that is on a per-unit-per, per-month basis, also very, very minimal. And the types of things that we'd be looking at, I, I think we're going to see that we will have the quality of our rental housing stock meet minimum health and safety standards, which I think is, is a really good goal for this community to have, and I really applaud the work that Rick has done, his staff, and the other departments, the legal. Peter Roboto should be called out for the work that he's done on this ordinance, as well as the IT staff. You know, we're doing a really good job with this, and I really look forward to seeing August first roll around.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we, oh, we need to vote on that. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. We'll now go to committee of the whole. First item on our committee of the whole is the appointment of hearing examiner. Under Bellingham Municipal Code two-point-five-six-point-zero-two-zero, the mayor appoints the hearing examiner for two-year period upon the confirmation of city council. Mayor Kelly appoints Sharon Rice as the city's hearing examiner for a two-year period subject to council confirmation. Sharon Rice has been doing a fantastic job. We're glad that she's going to continue to do it for the next two years. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Roxanne.
I just hope you can extend our gratitude to her, because, you know, the hearings examiner is such a touchy role, and if we have a really good one, we're really lucky, and I'm just really grateful we have her.
Okay, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Approval of minutes, we have the evening session of January twelfth, two thousand fifteen to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
I think Jack seconded. You, Roxanne's getting so fast, it's hard to keep up.
I know.
She's just really diving right into it. Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Old or new business? I know we had some of that this afternoon. I'll start out by bringing up, we don't have to decide it tonight, but we need to communicate to Marie. She brought up the council retreat sometime in March. Do we want to have a facilitator? Do we want to still go to Woodstock Farm? So everybody send in their suggestions, and hopefully it's a Saturday. If it's not, we'll do it some other time, but whatever you do, I mean, we've done it over there before, so. She'll be sending out a questionnaire here, probably tomorrow, and see what everybody's dates are, rather than us try to go through, through our calendars. Terry?
I think before we decide whether we want a facilitator, we have to figure out what the main topic of the retreat, and then to see if, because that should determine whether we need a facilitator to help work through issues that we're going to be discussing.
Well, yeah, and you can send topics too, whatever, whatever everybody has in their mind. The, I'm sure the mayor will be there too. We'll invite her.
[laughing]
No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, that's, we, we've, we did it in March last year, so hopefully we can do it again in March. So is there any other old or new business? Jack?
Just bring up something I brought up this afternoon. Skolikum Creek Park is, got a soft opening, about one-third of it is open now. The, the other part will be open once the grass is, is established itself. But the parts that are open, dog-off leash area, basketball court, there is a playground that is very well-attended. I've gone by there twice today. Both times, there were well over a hundred people that were using the playground on a January day. It was pretty nice today, but, but this was just word of mouth. I mean, nobody, there hasn't been any sort of official announcement that this park's open yet, but it's a really nice playground. It's got a zip line, which the Chucknut Forest does not. That's an inside joke.
He doesn't, he never misses a beat, does he? He's just right on there.
And it's, I don't know, today, the parking lot was just completely full, and I look forward to seeing the park open. It should be open fully within the next couple of months, once the grass gets going. There'll be a couple more ballfields to, to be able to play in as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to report out that I attended a couple of conferences. So I went to the Washington Cannabis Summit, which had legislators and representatives from the medicinal marijuana, recreational cannabis, and proponents for industrial hemp, and they shared our twenty, their two thousand fifteen action agenda with us, and had discussion in regards to how legislation's going to happen in regards to medicinal and recreational, which is extremely complicated and in front of our state legislators right now, but which is why we keep moving our zoning rights, our zoning ordinances, because we don't know what to do yet, because the state hasn't figured it out. So it's very complicated. It was a very educational day. And then the second one is I went to the State of the Bay, a research symposium, which was scientists, legislators, representatives from the Lummi Tribe, and it was put on by the WSU Extension Program. It was a very comprehensive overview of the condition of Bellingham Bay, and it was amazing and very, very insightful to the changes that have been happening in our Bellingham Bay over the years. And I encourage any of you who have interest in water rights or water issues in Bellingham, or just overall water, to look on WSU's extension site and look at the overview of the program itself, because it was a, it was a very powerful day.
Okay. Roxanne.
Well, I had the pleasure of attending the Mount Baker Bicycle Club's annual meeting. I got to thank the club for everything that they do for cycling, and also really thank them providing, for providing input to our bicycle master plan, so that was exciting. Also, I was able to attend an event at Make Shift, and the Make Shift organization is doing fundraising to create a community radio station. So I'm asking anybody, if they have it within their hearts, to please donate to Make Shift so that they can make this community radio station a reality. For more information, you can visit makeshiftproject.com. And lastly, some exciting news, I think, from our Bellingham School Board and the school district. They're doing a work session and trying to figure out how they'll start a program regarding restorative justice, especially for kids that are possibly thinking about or on the fringe of dropping out, and how they can come together to really help those kids stay in school and deal with some of their issues. So I just thought that was a really good thing, that they're thinking and pondering, and will hopefully do.
Okay, any other old or new business? Okay, seeing none, the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, I have to do the executive session first. It's not on my script. See, I have two scripts. I have to follow both of them. Okay, we now go to our executive session report. We had three items. The first item was litigation. City of Bellingham versus Daniel Bennett and the Department of Labor and Industry. Staff provided information about a negotiated settlement in a litigation matter. I will now entertain, entertain a motion to authorize a settlement of this matter under the following terms. The city will pay Mr. Bennett twenty-five thousand dollars lump sum payment. The city will dismiss its pending appeal of an industrial insurance claim. Mr. Bennett will voluntarily resign from his position, and Mr. Bennett will waive all claims against the city.
I so move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Dan? I mean, he's new. We got to give him some.
[laughing]
Okay, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. The second item was litigation. Corn, how do you pronounce it?
Cornelius.
I think it's Cornelius.
Okay. Cornelius versus City of Bellingham, Waukesha County Superior Court. Staff provided an update on this litigation matter, direction given, no action was taken. Litigation, City of Bellingham versus Sang T. Y. Staff provided an update on litigation matter, direction given, no action was taken. Mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll just go quickly down the list. I have a reappointment of Jono Mannion to the Greenways Advisory Committee, and that needs your approval.
Move approval?
He's my friend, and I second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
I also have, just for your information, an appointment of Zacharelli Fresco Baldi Girmaldi to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Group, which is a part of the COG.
And he's up in the crowd tonight?
Okay.
How about ZFG? That's even better, isn't it? Thank you for your service.
Access, the Bellingham Training RFP is now available on the city's website for PEG, so we're looking for trainers. If you know anybody or want to have people look, then, oop, then it's available for them there. We're looking for a trainer.
Jack? I knew that was going to be. Wait a minute, Jack's got a question, Kelly.
Are we, we had these informational meetings at the very beginning, and I'm trying to remember, I believe that there was an actual sign-up there. Are we sending it out to those, those folks? Because they seem to have the most interest in the, the overall program.
I think we could do that.
Brad Heinrich, Mayor's Office, we, we did notify that stakeholder list of, of the availability, so.
Great.
Yeah, we contacted them as soon as, as soon as we were able to.
Thank you.
Yep. Secondly, our seventy-fifth wedding is.
Oh, I didn't know you were, I didn't know you were that old.
No, only thirty-one years.
She married young.
Yeah, I was like five. Bless. Anyway, it went very well today, and I'll tell you, the highlight was the Birchwood Grizzlies, which are the kids singing. The Piper and the vintage fire truck were here, and I want to thank Mallory and Sophia and BTV Ten. They organized a really nice event, and I want to echo Terry's comments on Marie's involvement in Martin Luther King Day Two. It was another good event. After it was all over, a man came up to me who was in a wheelchair. His name was John Anderson, and he was ten years old and was at the first dedication, which I thought was pretty cool, and I wish I would have met him before I would have introduced him, but they're going to stick something up on the Facebook page so people can see who he is. Let's see, there's two draft letters that, one I've been requested from the governor to send, and then the other one is a request to respond to the, the Lummi's request for GPT denial permits. I brought the, there's six letters we've already written. I've drafted a letter for each one. I'm happy to, I mean, for both the GPT and for the fish consumption, which I was on the governor's committee that worked on that, and he asked us all to, to draft a letter. I'm doing that, to support two bills, House Bill fourteen-seventy-two and Senate Bill fifty-four oh-six. And either one of these letters, I am happy to sign on to with, with the president of the council, if the council would like to participate, but I thought I'd just let you know. And you know, I need, you know, I, I need, well, I guess you maybe should discuss it a little, because Wednesday, we need to have it finalized.
Jack, did you have a question? Okay.
The fish consumption one is an opportunity to deal with both point source pollutions at the end of a pipe and non-point source pollutions, which are our biggest pollution contributor. So I appreciate the approach the governor took, and we also made the requirements more stringent. The other one basically is looking at treaty rights at Cherry Point and saying, saying that if we can't mitigate for all the impacts that we put in all these letters, then we ask the Army Court, I'm asking the Army Court to deny the permit.
Okay, council, what's your wishes? Jack?
Just a quick read of the, the fish consumption one. I would move approval of the council president signing on to this letter.
I'll second that.
Second that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Lilliput.
Thank you. I'm unfamiliar with the details of House Bills fourteen-seventy-two and Senate Bills fifty-four oh-six. What I last heard about the fish consumption standards as proposed by the governor is that there was great improvements in recognizing the realistic level of fish consumption, and therefore exposure, but there was a, at the same time, a changing of the other numbers about the allowable toxins that people could be exposed to. So it sort of gave with one hand and took away with another.
That were raised also. It wasn't as high as potentially the tribal participants on our work group would have liked, so it was a compromise, but they, everything is, is raised. And the main thing for me is that it also deals with non-point, point source, because the information that we got at that meeting from, from, this wasn't necessarily disputed, was that the point source pollution, the pollution that was coming out of the pipe pollution, the pollution that was coming out of the pipe, and I wish I had the figure with me, was a very small percentage of the total pollution that was going into our water bodies. The main pollution is going from cars and coal dust from China and other things that are just washing, non-point sources that are washing off. So even if we only did, if we only did the point sources and we put them down to zero, which is unobtainable right now, because some of the chemicals, we are unable to mitigate and test for, so it's hard to say we have to do it. But that, we wouldn't be measurably cleaning up our water bodies. But I understand, I mean, I sat through all these work sessions, and I feel comfortable supporting these pieces of legislation, but I would understand if other people didn't.
Moving away from, for the moment, the point source versus non-point source, I guess I'd like to know whether or not 1472 and 5406 have changed in any material way from how the governor's proposal came forward, I don't know, six, eight months ago.
It is my understanding that it hasn't because his proposal was written into legislation, and that's legislations before the legislature, and that legislation might not turn out the way it's being introduced.
Okay, what I guess, where I sit right now is, as much as I would like to support the change to a more realistic fish consumption standard, the downward adjustment of the allowable toxin exposure, or rather, the upward adjustment, you're allowed to be exposed to more toxins, means I'm not in fully supportive of the governor's approach, and so I personally wouldn't sign on to this without those caveats.
I don't know if you're accurate on that.
Yeah.
It isn't as high as they wanted, but it was increased. No, it's fine.
Roxanne.
I just have a process question. Is there any way we can improve how we receive this kind of stuff, like more through an agenda item? Because this is kind of stressful for me with dyslexia and then also with wanting more information to be able to look into it so I have a better opinion.
And that would, that would be great. In this particular case, we didn't have any notice either. I mean, this was something that, because I participated on the work group, they asked me to do it, and I just wanted to be able to give you an opportunity. I understand.
But you can send it off by yourself without.
Yeah, no, no. I can, I'm going to send both of these off, whether I have support or not, but I appreciate what you're saying, Roxanne. And if we have time during a legislative session, sometimes it's a little more difficult, but if we have time, I'd be happy to get them to you sooner.
Terry?
But sometimes, even if you could have gotten it to us this afternoon so we could read it before we come in here, that would provide a whole lot instead of handing it up and say, we have to either approve it tonight or not sign on to it because it's sent out Wednesday, so, you know, that does, it's kind of a tight window. I mean, to look at it immediately, we could have, if we could have gotten it this afternoon even, at least you get a chance to read it ahead of time.
No, I understand, Terry, and I can certainly do that.
Pinky.
I have a logistical question. Do we all have to sign on in order to have the council, or can we do individual support?
If, I think, I think if Jean signs on, it means he's speaking for all of you.
That's usually the way it's been.
Yeah.
And it's a majority of the council.
Right. It's the council.
Okay. Anything else, Kelly?
Uh.
Oh, Peter, excuse me.
And maybe I just lost track. A point of order, so there is a motion, but was there a second?
Yes, motion and second before us right now.
So you want to keep, that's right, okay.
Yeah, Michael's the only one objected.
Mr. Lilliputts.
Is this a motion referring to both letters or just the one?
Just the one first.
The one first.
Then that's the one on the fish consumption.
Yeah, the one on the fish consumption.
I can't, I don't want to support that one personally.
Okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five of two. Okay, the next letter. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I guess, so even if people don't want to sign on, they sign on if it's a majority.
The council just supported. Yep. Sometimes there's things that are passed that even I don't agree with.
I just want to be clear before I do something that makes someone unhappy.
Okay, what about the next letter? Oh, I'm sorry. Dan?
I would move to support the mayor's letter to Senators Murray and Cantwell upholding the treaty rights and more specifically to, for the request of the denial of the permit for the proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal Bulk Dry Good Shipping Facility.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Jack?
That's to authorize Jean to sign it.
Yeah. That's where the motion.
Okay.
Michael?
Yeah, it would have been nice to have a little more warning. However, I did just read the entirety of the letter, and it seems to me that a lot of this is just informational and that the real operative sentence is the last sentence, and really, that's the only sentence that's operable. It says, "Please urge the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to deny the permits under its jurisdiction for the proposed Gateway Pacific Terminal if it finds that the impacts from the project to usual and accustomed treaty rights cannot be mitigated." Frankly, I think that's just frankly the law, that that is exactly how it is always interpreted, and I have no problem supporting what I think is an obvious restatement of the standards.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Is there anything else to come before the council? Seeing none. The next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be February 9, 2015. Meeting adjourned.